So we'll call the June meeting of the Troy Planning Board to order. Would you stand, please, and remember Shufa will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the acts of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call a roll. Member Scully.
Here.
Member Dickinson.
Here.
Member Shufa.
Here.
Member York.
Here.
Member Keo, present. The board is present. First order of business, I guess, will be to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
To make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting, last one.
Do you second?
I second that.
Member York, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item, we've had a request from the applicant for 2025-0002-6047th Avenue to extend the review period. Is the applicant here? I think not. So in any event, we've received that app, the request to extend the review period to give them more opportunity to complete what they're working on. So Steph, do you have any comment on that? Anybody?
They didn't show up, but I would assume that just motioning until they're concluded with their business and DDU and the city engineer, and then whenever they're ready to come back. If that works for you.
So these are the townhouses?
Yes. You have the authority to table it if you move to do so. Just table it until they indicate they're ready to come back. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we table.
I second.
And discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Another administrative item I want to mention. For some of these applications that are on the agenda tonight, there will be an opportunity for public comment. Some of them will be required and some of them will be optional. So in either event, we're going to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. If you've already submitted comments in writing, we'd ask you not to repeat those. Those will be part of the record and we will read or will have read all of those. If you have something new to say, of course, you're welcome to come up and comment on that. And also I'd ask you to consider out of consideration for everyone else. If someone has already made your point, I don't think it's necessary for you to make it again. Hearing it twice doesn't make it twice as important. Just if you have, you know, information that we should have in our decision-making process, we'd like to hear it. But we don't have to hear it twice or five times. So. But that'll be up to you to decide whether or not it's already been set. So first item on the agenda tonight under old business is 2025-0017-285 Pauling Avenue. Is the applicant present? Welcome back. Is there anything new you want to add since your last visit here?
No.
Okay. Okay, so it's up for final approval. We need public.
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 Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry. So you guys take a seat, I guess, and we'll see what the public has to say. Is there anyone from the public who wishes a comment on this application? Now what? Okay, I guess then.
Is there anyone online?
Pardon me?
Is there anyone online?
There's nobody on here.
No one online either? Okay. All right, then I guess we could entertain a motion for final approval. What about the demolition? Do we address that separately? Okay, so final approval of the application.
I'd like to make a motion to go forward with this application, final, toward final approval.
Do you second?
I second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Now, there is an issue, part of the application or additional application, I think, is demolition. Other buildings on this, on the site, is there a separate, need a separate motion to approve the demo?
Demolition was included in their project proposal. Our staff recommends, comments address them. It's just a separate motion just to inform them if you feel to approve the demolition that was proposed as part of their project proposal as well.
So separate motion to approve the demo proposal.
So I make a motion that we approve the demolition as proposed in their application. And they can go ahead with it?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item. 2025-006-1820 Stowe Avenue. Before us for final approval. Applicant?
My name is Dan Callen, Valley Home Restoration. We have taken Frank France as a property owner. We are looking to move forward with our six-unit residential building on Stowe Avenue to replace the building. The six-unit building that was lost to fire. The staff reportedly received two items to add windows to the right elevation and a roof over your egress. We successfully added over to our plan. Then over to move forward.
Okay. There was another issue, I think, that was concerned was sidewalks. Did you? Let's see. Yeah, did you?
I believe they agreed to do any repairs we needed.
Yeah, there are recommendations from our staff, Building Department, that they replace the sidewalks along their property.
That were destroyed during, either the firefighting or the demolition or something. So are you agreeable to?
Absolutely.
And you work with the planning department, there's codes to get the proper sidewalk down there?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Is there anyone from the public to comment on this application? Anyone want to comment on this application? Anyone online? Okay, no, no public comment? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve PLPC 2025-0006-1820 Stowe Avenue.
Discussion, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item is PLPB 2025-0027-416 Third Street. Before us for final approval. Yep, is the applicant present? Yes. How are you doing?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, sir chief of Hursburg, representing the applicant. Since the last meeting, we were last meeting we were here.
Turned on.
We submitted.
I think it's on.
It would be on the bottom, sorry.
That'd be easier if you held it.
You can bring it over to staff here. Is that on?
Yep.
Bill McFritchie with Hursburg, and Hursburg representing the applicant. Last month when we were here, we had committed to submit additional information for review. Part of that was transportation demand management plan, a stormwater management plan, and several modifications to the site plan, which included landscaping, handicap space, EV charter, EV stations, and site lighting. I believe it would adjust the comments, and we're here for the project for site plan approval.
All right, does anyone have questions for the applicant?
Excuse, was that in your parking lot that you want to, you want 31 spaces, correct? Thirty-one?
There's a total of 59.
Well, you have 20.
And we hit 31.
Thirty-one new spaces.
Additional, correct.
Was it recommended that there be shade trees in there? Is that part of what the landscaping is that you're talking about?
Yes, in between the two, there's a separation between the existing parking lot and the proposed parking lot, and we're proposing shade trees.
Okay. I drove past there today, and on Church Street, do you use both sides of the street on Sundays for parking? I noticed that it said St. Joseph's Parking, and you pull into Church Street. Is that both sides you can use after parking on Sundays?
I don't know whether to use that both sides. I'm not familiar with that.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And on a, I noticed that the bus schedule was like 7:30 in the morning, which is obviously. How, what time do you have services on Sunday? Okay.
Could you speak into the microphone if you're gonna?
Yeah, I think.
Speak for the record, please?
My name is Rich LaRose. I'm actually a parishioner of St. Anthony's, Iowa, downtown. But on occasions, I do go to St. Joseph's, so I believe that they have an eight to 10 and a 12. That would be my best guess on Sundays. And they also have a Saturday 4:30, I believe, too.
Okay, so you have no idea how many parishioners go at each service?
I think it was determined in the report that was established about 150 per service.
Per service?
Yes. Is that correct, Phil?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how many weddings you have a year?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Pastor Father Joseph couldn't attend an idea of previous engagement, but I don't have that information. Is that information that you would want that we could forward to you?
I was just curious as to how many parking spaces you really do need. I know it's pretty tight down there. It's very tight. If you have 150 parishioners, I can understand. There's no buses. It's not the best area for walking, especially for seniors or older people.
My mom's 91, and my, either my sister or myself, the driver there, has to drop her off at the front.
Right.
Make sure she gets in okay, then park a couple.
Blocks away.
So sometimes you get lucky, and there might be a spot there, someone pulls out, but you've got the apartments on
Right.
Third, and then you've got the other side. And then it just, it's difficult. You've got stores there, too, so you've got a lot of traffic in that area south of the church. And every, as you know, at least back in the day, you know, people, sometimes you used to put out the kitchen chairs that kind of saved your spots.
Yeah.
Because it's so difficult to find a spot. So father is looking to kind of grow the parish, and it's really great. And I can see that happening. I've had discussions with him before. So we're hopeful that not just sustain it, like a lot of the denominations now, different churches, they're losing.
Right.
So he's actually slowly growing it, and that's really what he's trying to establish and provide that kind of amenity for the seniors. You know, the ones that live in downtown, they're not going to be able to walk eight, ten blocks.
Right.
Wait an hour or so to get a bus and wait to catch one back. If they have a car or somebody's driving them, that's how they, they're going to get them. They're going to drive there to access the church.
Okay.
So he's just looking to kind of make it a little bit more amenable to the parishioners.
So I'm assuming that a lot of their parishioners come from quite a few different places with St. Patrick's and St. Peter's closed.
I lived in Lathan.
Yeah.
I come down, so.
Yeah, it's a Latin mass, I think, on Saturday evening, a lot of people go there.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I was kind of hesitant to cover over a lot of that green space, but I couldn't. Doesn't go with a comprehensive plan, but I can certainly see your.
There's still green space left. He does have festivals during the summer, so they really, the community loves being outdoors. They put up the tents, and so we try to contain, you know, as much green space as we could. But he definitely needs, you know, another two rows. He's got two rows on the school side of the church street up against. So he's got one right up against the building, and Church Street runs through. And he's got another existing row parked there.
Right.
And then there's an island that we're going to create. And then on the other side, on the west side of that island, we're going to establish hopefully two more rows apart. So circulation will take up some of that space, obviously, and we're left with, I think, 31 spaces.
Okay, so are you going to take the chain link fence down?
Yes.
To continue that?
Yes.
The parking?
There's a low pipe rail, and then there's chain link fence up. That's going to be regrouped to allow the access on both sides.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. We'll see if any member of the public wants to comment.
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Mabels, 511 Second Street. I emailed everybody with my full comments, but basically just to reiterate, by the applicant's own admission, this is about making things nice for the parishioners. Meanwhile, all of the negative effects are left to those of us who live in the neighborhood. The TDMP has not, repeat, not shown the need for this demand. The, there's been no rigorous look at street parking the way that every other TDMP that has come before you has demonstrated. So that analysis has not been conducted in this TDMP. So for that reason alone, I would say the TDMP is not adequate according to our own law. So on that basis alone, I would at the very least insist that the applicant conduct a proper TDMP. But let's be honest. Adding, adding it, adding that additional surface parking lot is a detriment to the neighborhood. We suffer all of those negative impacts from having that surface parking lot in our neighborhood for a matter of a few hours. A few hours. And believe me, I live in the neighborhood. I walk around during services, after services. I walk through that area numerous times throughout the week. We are really talking about the need for a couple hours a week. So the needs of the wants, let, again, the applicant said, it's nice. So for the wants of the few that will not bear that burden and, you know, compared to the balance against the negative effects that it's going to have on the neighborhood. So for that reason, I urge the board to disapprove this, this site.
Let me ask you, what would be the negative impact on your neighborhood if that church closes? Because they're not able to attract attendees at the church?
So again, by the applicant's own admission, they're doing great. So I don't understand what the, what the issue is. This is, this is about people's, what they want and what they would like. And let's be, let's also just speak some truth to it. It's because they don't like the area. And that's very offensive to people who, like me, who live in the area. So because there's plenty of parking, block, two blocks, three blocks away, it's there.
I don't know. I've been there to services, and I've never been able to find a parking place within many blocks. Or I'm not sure that there's a lot of parking there on the street. And they may be doing great, but they're doing great because they're trying to grow and have the finances to keep that big structure open, which is, which is an important part of South Troy, and the history of that church is an important part of South Troy. So I would think you, you as a neighbor who lives there would be interested in keeping it going, not trying to shut it down.
Without a doubt, but this is a, basically an antisocial move. This is not being a good neighbor. This is, this is imposing negative externalities on the neighborhood for their benefit, their benefit alone. This is not being a good neighbor.
Are they not part of the neighborhood? Don't they live there? Don't the priests live there?
Look, I don't know who lives where. This is like, you know.
When you live there and you don't know who lives there?
No, I don't know who goes to the church. I don't want to attend the church. So I don't know who attends, but it's, let's just be real, like, you can deny it all you would like, but like, again, I'm a transportation planner by training. I've walked around those streets plenty of times during services. There's plenty of parking within two, three, four blocks. And if we can't, if we can't walk for two, three, or four blocks, then like, what do we? This is not, we're not, we're not actually planning for a city. We're planning for the suburbs. We're not a suburb.
Thank you.
What, what are the negative impacts that you're speaking of?
Sure. So we're taking, you know, pervious surface, making it impervious. There is the heat island effect. There's also the, you're taking green space away, and it prevents that, that piece of land. If the church does in fact grow, you've basically taken that space away to, for the, to build on, to actually be a part of, a contributing part of the, of the community. Building, buildings there and actually hosting services for the people who are there, rather than accommodating parking, that would be a benefit to the, to the, to the neighborhood.
What about, how about the people? What do you feel about the people that go to mass that aren't as able as maybe you and I?
Yeah. Absolutely.
That really don't have the ability to walk three, four blocks to make it to mass?
The applicant just said it, that you can work out different systems?
That's a detriment to them. You know, they, you know.
Yeah.
There was, you know, when I was a kid, excuse me. When I was a kid, there was a number of Catholic churches in Troy, New York. There was one almost every.
Every two blocks.
Every two blocks. One almost every, there was a bar in the church every, every block. But as you know, they became against me, and they, and they shut down. So what do we got left? We got St. Joseph's, and we got St. Anthony's. Growing up in South Troy, that's where I grew up, South Troy, and I'm proud of it. And St. Joseph's was the heart and soul of South Troy. St. Joseph's Gymnasium, that's where everybody that's, was the heart and soul of South Troy, bottom line. And all they can do is grow, as long as we have Catholics. As we're raising Catholics and blah, blah, blah. Hopefully, St. Joseph's is going to grow. And I think we need to accommodate them. That's my opinion. We need to accommodate the church. The church has been there a long time. It's a beautiful building. And there's not many left.
I can understand that, but it's just the, by accommodating the desires of parishioners to drive, that is not in fact helping the church in the long run. How you help the church in the long run is make the neighborhood a place to want to live, work, and play, and worship. Expanding surface parking lots is the exact opposite of doing that. We are not making it more attractive to walk, to bike, to live nearby. That's, so if you want that vision, that vision of what you used to have, this is a step in the wrong direction. This will not serve that purpose.
Yeah, a lot of people can't walk, drive, or bike to church.
Absolutely. You're absolutely correct, and that's why.
So what do we do? We take that away. We say, now you got to go to St. Anthony's. Now you got to walk six blocks to get a spot and walk to mass?
This is just, this is just about.
That's, that's, we're just talking.
Yeah.
Just my opinion.
No, this is, this is where you get into things like curbside management, where you say like, hey, like, we are going to reserve certain spots on the curbside for people who have mobility issues. We already do that. We have the ability to do that. That's, that's a management issue. That's, so we can accommodate these types of needs all we want, but that's not what we're talking about.
You need like a valet parking, you're saying?
I don't think you necessarily need the valet, but like, I mean.
Well, we're way past three minutes, but I know we've been, we've been engaging you, too. So we're interested in what you have to say, and it's, and it's, and it's interesting, and, you know, taking all that into account.
What is their price? Well, my comment was, your point about building on that site, wouldn't that create the same sort of opposition as to what you're saying about surface space? You know, creating a parking lot there? So I don't know that, that's a zero-sum game if you're talking, you know, for the church to be able to later perhaps build something on that site. So I, when you said that, I just thought.
Right, but it's about what's the trade-off? We're giving up that space for what? If we're talking about housing people or more space for people to do worship or meetings, that's, that's, that's a situation where you can say, that's a worthwhile trade-off that we can make. And we can also talk about do, making, make, freeing up other green spaces to deal with stormwater runoff and other such things. But for surface parking lot that's only used for a couple hours a week? Again, and I will, I will direct your attention back to our own documents. The comp plan does not support this. Our zoning does not support this. So I'll just leave it at that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Come forward. Hi.
Hi. My name is Pamela Benteen. I'm a resident of the neighborhood. And I'm a little puzzled why the city would be going out of its way to help a church grow its congregation. But other than that. To help a church grow its congregation. But other than that, I've always been rather surprised at how many vacant spaces there are during services. The fact that there aren't more cars. I would be very disturbed by losing that green space because over the 33 years that I've lived in my home there, I have watched how the temperatures have soared during the summers. And I used to be able to get by in my home without any air conditioning during the summer. And now I can't go without using the air conditioner on a regular basis. So to have more paving and to have the heat generated by that is a big concern to me at this point. I think that there are other ways of accommodating the needs of the people who have mobility issues for the congregation and maybe expanding the parking somewhat, but not to the extent that's being requested. That's out of whack with the scale of the situation. And so I hope that you will reconsider the full request and scale it back.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public comment period. Is there anyone online?
I don't.
Is there no one online at all, Eric? No one wants to speak?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Usually, yes.
And then the applicant may want to address the comments. Do you want to address any of those comments?
Yeah. You know, regarding, we are using green infrastructure practices, even though they're not required. We are using infiltration and a stormwater management plan. In addition to that, we are providing additional landscaping, screening. So we are conscious of the neighborhood and the views and the business and the generation of that additional green space.
Okay. Can I just, I saw the aerial view, and there's all trees along Third. They're going to stay there, correct? Nothing is going to happen with those. Correct. And you're going to have an island with trees.
Correct. Between the existing parking and what would be proposed.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it. I mean, they have to have communions. They have to have confirmations. I'm sure they have weddings. That's, that's a lot of people to try and find places to park. And if you have 150 congregants at each, that's a lot of people. And I'm sure three quarters of them are us older generation. So I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so is is there a motion to get final approval of the application?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve PLBP 2025-0027.
Second?
I second.
Discussion on the motion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Good luck. The next item, PLPB 2025-0028-0 Farrington Avenue, also known as 170 Winter Street. Is the applicant here? Yes.
Good evening. Luke Michaels, applicant for 00 Farrington, also known as Winter Street Extension. So we were here in front of the board last month to explain the lot line adjustments. And we're here tonight to seek final approval. If the board had any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant?
You're doing the adjustment on the survey, and you're also building one home? Was that the original?
The parcel will be zoned for a single-family home, correct? At this time, we don't have a building permit application to build.
Okay.
It would only suit one home at this time.
Okay.
Will this project have any kind of, any kind of impact whatsoever? Will this project have any kind of, any kind of impact whatsoever besides your normal construction activities noise? It'll be construction based on regular workdays, that kind of thing?
I, I wouldn't expect it. It would be one single family home. So likely it's, you know, typical construction traffic for a single family home.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I guess we have public hearing. Open up for public comment. Is there anyone here to comment? Sure, come on down and identify yourself. Fight it out between yourselves.
My name is Alicia Carey. I'm on 52 Farrington Avenue. My neighbor, she lives at 50 Farrington Avenue. She might have submitted the question online. She wasn't sure if I went through.
Yes, it did.
Okay, so that was my main concern too.
Answers to it, I think.
Yeah. That's not it really. I don't know. Do you want to read what she wrote down? Do you want to go through the email she sent?
No, we've, we've, we've read it.
Okay, that's all.
Whatever we get, we, we do take the time to read.
All right. I'm just concerned, you know, we weren't sure how many houses. One house, we heard at 1.8 to 12 houses were going to be built.
Well, one house right now.
One house. Okay.
I think the question was how will it affect?
Yes, exactly.
Houses, yes. Basically minimal.
Okay, right.
I mean, you'd like to make that judgment, but it doesn't sound like it's going to be a big impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, that was great to know. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you also want to comment, Kim?
I live at 160 Taft Avenue. The last meeting that we were at, we were told that the driveway to this house would be coming from Taft Avenue up into the house so that there would be, I guess the address would be Taft Avenue. I live at 160 Taft Avenue. I also just heard that it's, they're asking for one single family home. And I think it's about nine acres. And we'd like to make sure, the people on Taft Avenue want to make sure that it is just one home. That it doesn't become a separate neighborhood. That the impact of our street is, our street was nothing but farmland. You can't get one car going one way and another car going the other way at the same time. I don't understand why, if Michael's group wants to put in a, even a one family house, why they can't go through Farrington and not through an existing street that was not ever meant to be a two-way street. In the wintertime, a fire truck cannot even get down the streets. Get onto Hamilton, but it can't get onto Albert. It can't get onto Annie Street. It can't get down Taft Avenue. And we don't have, everyone has a driveway on our street. So we're talking not cars parked on the road. We're talking about it's a single lane road. It hasn't been paved. I've lived there 37 years. Nothing has been done to the road in 37 years. I don't think that it's made for another single family home. I don't think that you're going to have to hook into our water. I don't know what they're going to do. I'm sure that they're going to have to hook into our gas lines. And you're talking about even for a single family home. If you look at the terrain of the property that Michael's group is talking about, you're talking, he's going to have to bring in some very heavy equipment to move you know, dirt, rock, shell. Our street is not made for that. It's a little tiny street of nine homes, 10 tops. It's just not feasible.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Barbara Delap and I live at 160 Taft Avenue.
And it's tapped you're referring to is really dilapidated?
Yes, we were, we spoke with Mr. Wilson. I believe his name is Eric Wilson. And he said that he was going to be going through Taft Avenue to put a one family home where possibly his daughter. We also have a lot of wildlife that we all enjoy. I mean, there's turkey, there's deer, there's fox, there's coyotes, there's everything down there in that neighborhood. It's going to disturb the wildlife. I just don't see that this is a feasible request. I think if he wants to put in another house, let him go off of Farrington. It's, it's not. Farrington is not a busy street at all. But to do it to Taft Avenue. We have elderly people in that neighborhood. And we are all for one and one for all. We take care of each other. And when a fire truck is trying to get down the street, we're doing everything we possibly can. Come up on our lawn. We have elderly people in that neighborhood that need to be able to have access for a fire truck or an ambulance or a rescue. So I think it really needs to be, I think all this needs to be taken into account.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to comment?
Yeah, I'm on Zoom. This is Becky Horton. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
I'm at 50 Farrington Avenue. Farrington Ave is a paper street going down to Taft, I believe. And for Farrington Ave to go down to Taft, there's going to have to be major road construction done for that to be feasible because Farrington Ave actually ends at Berkeley where 48 Farrington is. And then Farrington becomes a paper, a paper street right there going down to Taft. I believe down to 0 Farrington Ave. So major road construction would also have to be done to make Farrington a drivable street going down. And also coming up. And the existing Farrington Ave is really not wide enough for two-way traffic. So changes to the existing Farrington Ave would also have to be done. So I don't know if they were going to use Farrington Ave to access Taft or is it Taft down there? I, I believe. If they were going to use Farrington Ave, they would, I believe, have to do construction for the existing Farrington Ave, have to make the paper street a real road going both ways. And I don't know what would be involved in all of that. Would be major construction, I believe. And like she said before me, you're talking electricity, sewer lines, gas lines. You know, I don't know what would all be involved in that. So I think you're talking major construction besides building a house. And then I also heard that on top of a single family house that in the future they were talking about putting possibly some section eight housing down there. Or maybe not section eight, but lower income housing, possibly. Not, not at this time with this proposal, but at a later date. I also heard that. So I just wanted to bring that up. And the, the issue regarding the road, the paper street.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else to comment? All right, the applicant like to address those, those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So yes, at, at this time, we're only seeking the lot line adjustments to create the new parcel, which will go from about nine and a half acres down to 8.2 acres. There is no proposal for any section eight housing or anything of the like. The, the parcel will have frontage on Taft Ave. The last caller was correct. Farrington is a paper street, so there's really no frontage to an actual road at this time. So if there were to be a single family home built in the future, the most efficient access would be from Taft Ave where there is a dead end street there. There's front road frontage as well as utilities right there as well. So.
And you, you don't have plans for anything beyond this at this stage, correct?
At this stage, no.
So if you were to build, when you, when you build, how do you propose to enter the construction site?
It would likely be building a driveway off of Taft Ave and access through Taft up to the house on the driveway.
And there's no other options to enter the property from, from, from your property?
Again, Farrington is, is a paper street and there's, it's not traversable at this point, you know, where it touches this property, encroaches this property. That's it.
Great. Anything else? Thank you. So does a city engineer have any of these concerns being mentioned by the neighbors?
Yep. So I just confirmed internally with our group, if there's, if there's any benefit of doing this subdivision or lot line adjustment that, that would help the applicant, you know, lead to multi-unit housing development, some trick up the code sleeve. And our understanding is no, it would, it's not zoned correctly. They'd have to go through ZBA. They'd have to do a further subdivision. So it appears that, you know, it would be a futile effort unless their intent is strictly to build a, a one.
Right. If they were going to do something further, they would have to come and start a new process.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So is it feasible for them to build one family house?
Yes.
It's, it's legal, it's zoned for one family. Engineering wise.
Yeah, it's feasible.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Becky Horton again. I just have one more question. Now, this won't affect any of us up on the top of Farrington Ave, any of our properties. Well, I mean, the, our, our, what do I want to say? Our, our, our titles or our.
Well, I mean, it, I guess that will be up to you to decide whether it affects you. It's not directly affecting you, but I guess any changes in your neighborhood would affect you one way or the other, maybe for good or bad. I don't think we can really say.
I mean, it's not going to affect our property lines, is it?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So. So we'll close the public hearing, I guess, and it's, she can final approval. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I moved the, we moved forward with the approval for the lot line adjustment.
Is it second?
I second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries unanimous. The next item is probably going to take some time, so I'm going to skip that for a minute and go on to the, to the next item, which is PLPC 2024 0059, 84th Street. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kyle Engstrom with ME Studio Architects. On behalf of the owner, Amaha Alman, here with us tonight. We were here June 17th. We had some notes that we wanted to address that we provided for in our latest submission, including light fixtures, details on where those would be located, garbage storage. Also information in terms of the size of the units. There's a rear egress to the, to the rear structure, the existing carriage house that we modified to be suitable for the, for the fire department chief that we met with. And we, we also have some ongoing things with the historic review committee that we've also addressed. So I'll open it up to any questions or.
So have you also addressed the fire department's concern about the 9/11 change of address on the carriage house?
We, we have that noted. We haven't filed that address change yet, but we have it noted.
Other questions?
Do we have any idea when DPO is going to sign off on the flow?
I'm, I'm sorry.
On the staff recommendation, DPU to sign off on flow calculations?
Yeah, it's typically will be required as part of the sewer permitting process. So they will need to do that prior to construction.
The owner is working currently with the town to upgrade the water lines.
Okay.
For flow capacity.
So and you have to go to the ZBA for a variance for your floor square footage?
So the, that has been, I think, somewhat of a confusion or debate, I would say. So we are complying with the front of house. We have an average of 742 square feet. We, we made a deliberate effort to make sure we were meeting that. Where this gets into, I, I think some kind of undefined territory is the rear building right now, the carriage house is effectively in disrepair. We are salvaging the, the alley exterior wall for historic purposes. But, you know, in speaking to the building department, it was my understanding that we were in agreement that effectively that building it will be 90% demolished once we account for the foundation, new foundation, new flooring, new roof. Essentially, when we're done doing the initial remediation work, it's effectively a new construction. As I understand it, in the zoning code, the, the 700 square foot rule, the intent of that was to, I think, prevent people from converting existing active buildings or active apartments and making them smaller. In our case, it's as if there, there will not be a building there when we, when we begin construction. So we're asking that really that rear building be considered as such, as, as, as new construction.
Okay.
I have a question. Have you submitted a demolition package?
To the building department?
Correct.
No.
And do you have any, do you have anything in writing from the building department about your ongoing correspondences?
I, I was told that I would have something by the end of the week after I spoke with them again, after speaking with you. I'm looking to have that by, by week's end, some clarity on that. We, we will be taking all the necessary precautions that. We, we will be taking all the necessary precautions that we would need to do a proper demolition and, and asbestos testing, et cetera.
So you, you plan on taking the top floor off this building, right?
I mean, it's, yeah, it's effective. When we're done with that, and it's kind of illustrated in one of these elevation drawings that we have in the package, when we're done with it, it will be a front wall.
Yeah.
You know? So I'm asking that that really be considered that, you know, and it's, it won't actually even be structurally relevant to the new building. We're keeping it for historic reasons, but it, it's a new building effectively.
What's the condition right now? The, you know, you can see from the street, it's right next to the practice, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see from the street. So what's the condition all the way back to the alley?
Yeah, currently, I mean, right now, you can see the bricks are, are not in great shape facing the alley. They've sustained a lot of water damage and, and, and freezing, water freezing. You know, the
Is it gonna fall down?
The floors are buckling. I, I don't think it's gonna fall down in any, in the near future, but we are concerned about it.
Okay, so, you know, it would be reasonable to say we got to clean it up and stabilize that. So particularly with the announcement today that the practice is going, now going to be city hall. That carriage house is actually adjacent, right, to the entrance?
That's correct.
Garage.
That's correct.
To the new city hall. So it's important that, you know,
Yeah.
That kind of stabilizes.
Correct.
Uh, instead of getting knocked down or, or whatever. So now it's cost, but
We.
I think it needs to, it needs to look right.
Yeah.
I, I gotta chime in real quick, just because we weren't really made aware of the extent of the applicant's desire to demolish until this week after staff reports were sent out.
Okay.
Um, you know, usually we would notice adjacent property owners of a demolition for historical resource like this. So our position, you know, absent any sort of, um, uh, input from the director of code, our position is that this is a modification and a renovation of an existing structure. That being said, I'll leave it to you guys.
So we, we are saving the carriage house, though, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think what Eric's referring, referring to is our language says mostly demolished.
Whereas really, what you're really doing is taking off the top floor of a five-story building, is that right? So what?
The, the five-story building is an existing building. We're complying with the seven hundred square foot rule. That's apart from the carriage house, which is in disrepair, it's vacant.
Right.
And we will be taking out the, the, the concrete, the concrete slab, doing a new concrete slab, new concrete footing, um, new interior structural walls, new roof, new floor plate. I mean, it's, it's a new building, you know?
Are you adding a floor to the front building, the fourth street building?
We're, we're not adding a floor. We are, currently, there is a fifth floor there that's, um, that is sort of sloped down towards, towards the east, and so we're, we're pushing that up, raising the building height by.
So I guess what, you know, we're a little bit confused.
Yeah.
The streetscape itself, it's not five stories on the street, correct? As you look at, I think I've seen this from a parking garage, and you looked down, it's odd, it does go up like this toward the back.
Yeah, there, there is five stories that are visible.
From the street?
Windows area from the street. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There is.
You can see it. So the, it seems to me like there's a bunch of things. That's a historic district, right?
Yeah.
So you're changing the height of a building in the historic district, correct? Have you talked to ship out?
Yeah, well, we reviewed this with the historic review committee. And, um, in terms of the sidelines, you, from the fourth street, the visibility will remain the same. Because there is, there is actually height there. It tapers back.
Okay.
To, so we, you know, we've been through the historic board on this and, and they, they've actually given us their blessing to do that. I think the real issue here is, is in the definition of that carriage house. Which I would propose that, you know, it's, it's a point of contention here, but I think it will continue to be in the future if, if there's not. I couldn't find any language really defining that threshold to where an existing building is no longer an existing building because it's effectively been ninety percent removed.
So was there notice given to the adjoining properties regarding the demolition of the?
So I, I think this, I think Eric was not understanding the degree of the demolition there, and so.
No, I didn't notice adjacent property owners. My review of the projects, uh, looked at an extension into the courtyard. And, uh, there was no made mention of, you know, when, when we talk about a historical resource or structure, you know, and, and, uh, an applicant's proposal to demolish it, we would distinguish that in, um, in the agenda sort of, um, description of the project. My understanding was that you were building off of the, the, the rear wall of the carriage house, if you will, into the courtyard.
We are, we are doing that. We're, we're preserving the corbling in the, on the rear.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you just talk a little bit about your, uh, what you're going to HRC for is that this, this board is essentially the historic districts and landmarks review committee.
Absolutely. So, um, the, the rear of this existing carriage house has a special corbling detail at the cornice. The historic review committee asked us to, to preserve that, even though it's really now getting enclosed by the rear addition. And so we, we obliged, worked, we're working with our structural engineer to just essentially salvage that corbling detail that you would see from inside the apartment. But here again, you know, the corbling cornice is effectively, you know, maybe ten percent of that, of that rear wall. Not much of that wall will be left when, when the, when the, you know, demolition is complete. But, but we are preserving that nonetheless, and, and they were, they were pleased to, to hear that.
So where are we at, Eric? We, you have to kind of reapply.
Kyle, can I just, have you spoken with DPU regarding sewer and stormer calc chat? Have you started that conversation?
You know, I have not spoken to them directly. The owner, Amahi Alman, is, is also acting as, as general contractor and has been working with a team that has been in conversations with the city of Troy on that. They are upgrading the water and sewer lines.
All right. There, there could be considerable implications of connecting into the sewer, in the mine sewer areas that have significant impact on, on, on the project. So we, you know, I'd recommend we at least develop those, those conversations, prior to site plan approval, or it, it would be wise, I would say. It's one thing to finalize it in, in permitting post approval, but we should have a conversation.
Yeah.
Me, I'm Chris, City Engineer, and Andrew at DPU with your team.
I'm curious as to what you mean by the owner has been working with the team that is talking to DPU or? So you're not directly talking to DPU?
I may, so my name is Amahi Alman, I'm the owner. Um, I retained, sorry, I refer, I think they're called the JMJ Sewer. And we then retained another firm over the Seth Williams with, remember his firm, so he was an engineer. He applied for all of the, the permits. He filed, they did the flow tests, they ran the calculations, we got the report. As far as I know, they've applied for the permit. And as far as I know, we're scheduled to cut into the street tomorrow and tap into everything. So that's where, where that stands at the moment.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that's, yeah, if that, if that's the case, that's, yeah, much further along, then that's good.
Yep. Further questions?
Um, I'm looking at your plans and I'm seeing a lot of lines and whatnot as to where things are going. The, I don't even see what, oh, page fifteen. Is this the back? That's like the back of the carriage house, the way it's going to look?
Uh, let me just pull that up. Page fifteen?
Yes.
But you might be looking at a different format of the proposal, so.
Okay, well, there's.
If you want, I can share the image.
Yeah.
There's a wall and then there's five, five windows and a door, and then there's a picture with two windows and a door.
Yeah.
Tell the monitor, tell me.
Yeah.
Did you have a, oh, that?
That's the elevation.
Well, while we're on it, this is the corbling detail. The new, the new addition will essentially come over that and you'll be able to see that corbling from the interior of the apartment. But.
Take that, take that microphone with you if you're gonna.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
But otherwise, most of, most of the wall is, is effectively coming down and supported by new steel, um, I-beams.
So when you say that's going to be seen by the apartment, it's not going to be a part of the apartment, it's going to be?
It'll be inside the apartment interior.
So whoever has that first apartment coming out from that side is going to be able to, that will be in their house.
Right, effectively, in their, they'll be in their living room, they can look up and see the corbling.
So the, the courtyard remains the same, basically, it's just the building has changed, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the courtyard remains the same to some degree. There is, there is a twelve-foot addition into the courtyard from this wall that you see.
How big's courtyard right now?
Um, it's approximately thirty, maybe fifty feet.
So certain number of feet of that wall will remain original, and beneath it is going to be new wall, basically? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And you're supporting that wall on a steel beam?
Yeah.
How much of that wall will remain from the top down?
Yeah, that's fair.
Take that mic with you, I think.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just pull it up. Yeah. So we're, we're currently ironing out these details with the structural engineer, but effectively there, there might be a solution here. And as far as we know, this is, this is okay by historic, as long as we preserve the corbling, but, um, we'll have a a steel I-beam under, under that corbling, at which point we might preserve some brick columns, depending on how that process goes, or we might do a steel column that gets enclosed in, in a framed wall, but essentially.
Basically, from the top of the windows down is going to be gone?
Yeah, that, it's, yeah, it's opened up, you know, it's, the, where this wall is now will effectively be a pass-through from the kitchen to the living room. So, um.
So is it just gonna be one apartment there on the back of the carriage house that you're adding?
So the, where the existing carriage house is, in combination with the new footprint, would house four apartments, averaging roughly four hundred square feet per, for apartment.
Okay, let me add. Amahi Alman, um, one of the reasons we chose the strategy is because the side facing the alley has a lot of severe deterioration. And one of our strategies was to say we can, when we take these sections down, we can save these bricks, because we're gonna need to re-point and put everything back. And the most accurate way for us to put the right bricks on the street side facing of the building is to use the original bricks from the building. So part of this, because there are, if there's another side to the picture, it's very severe, right? And so to match the bricks and to get the right thing, we figured we could just use this as a strategy to make the street side facing about as immaculate as possible without having any notice, because again, reusing the original bricks.
Yeah. Yeah, and to, to that point, I think as we restore the, the alley facing brick, we're not entirely clear, you know, how much of that will actually just be rebuilt, you know? Once it starts, you know, once we start pulling the thread effectively, so.
So we have no picture in the documents that I'm looking at as to what you expect the back of that carriage house to look like?
Uh, there should be some sheets here that illustrate that.
The elevation that you had shown me.
So it would be the one on the left, not the right, I'm assuming.
Kyle, you're not concluded with the HRC, right? You, you still have ongoing talks or?
Where we last left it was they wanted a letter from us just confirming our approach to the corbling detail. And we sent that to Angelina today, actually. We also sent her the specifications on the exterior lighting. And, um, so to my knowledge, I think we're, we're pretty much in agreement. They, they want to see a sample from the mason before we do the full work, but essentially, I, I think we, we have their, their blessing.
And have you already confirmed with the PE about the encroachment permit for the?
That's
Step.
We need to do. I've been ironing out the details with the structural engineer, but yes, that, that's our next step is to, is to do that. We did meet with the, with the chief, um, fire marshal, and, um, he granted us that, just that two feet, that's the modification that we made before we had three feet. So we, we did concede that, and, um, the fire chief seemed okay if we did it that way. Our next step is to work with the, with the city engineer.
So can we just
We just have to.
hang on until we get some more details?
But it feels like this view looks at yet, so now maybe we go another meeting, just to lay out, right, so if they don't make a secret determination tonight, then there will be at least two more meetings, is that correct, Eric? Because they'll have to make this secret and then give a hearing, or can they set up a hearing and do secret and, uh, hearing the same day?
Well, the item has previously been declared as an unlisted item. You know, for seeker purposes, if you need to see additional items in the wake of any information that's been brought to you since last, last time there before you, then I would make that request now if you're not prepared to, uh, issue a determination on seeker.
Well, so it, this has already been determined to be an unlisted action, right?
That's correct.
So the only thing we really have to do is tie up a bunch of blue sands, have another meeting, and then a hearing. So you're, you're talking about two meetings, correct?
Words.
You, procedurally, you could, um, you know, you're, you're to address application completeness. If you feel it's necessary to do at this point now, you could make a determination on, uh, seeker unless you require additional information. Um, and then, uh, if any of those items that I just made mention of are satisfactory to you, you could, in theory, schedule the hearing. But if you would like to ask for additional information so that you can better understand the project, then tonight would be the opportunity to do so.
My pleasure, Jim.
I don't know. We need more.
Yeah, I don't know specifically what we'd be looking for, other than you said that the flow counts are kind of a little tight, because you've already got a contract to come in tomorrow.
I mean, yeah, so I, I hired a, an engineer to do a set of measurements, sorry, based on a preliminary, even though I know it's not approved. It's gonna need a new sewer main, it's gonna need a new water main, it's gonna need all this stuff anyway, so. Um, everything, as far as I know, was, I, I got a report showing all the calculations. It was filed, we pulled the permit. It was supposed to happen today, but it rained and the mayor was there. But other than that, as far as I know, we're scheduled to be cutting the street open tomorrow to, to do the, I think, both the water and the sewer tap. The sewers in the back and the waters in the front.
So, uh, status of the variance for the minimum square footage for the apartment?
So I think, as far as I understand, that this seems to be the, the one thing really holding this back, right? We have applied for, to the ZBA. Um, we have applied for, to the ZBA, uh, but, kind of with the impression that a letter from the building department stating that it is in fact a new construction, and therefore this wouldn't apply to us, I think is, I'm, I guess I'm asking, if, if I had that in hand, would that, would we be ready to move forward with this?
I think I have a, a little bit of concern that the extent of the demo wasn't noticed to the uh, adjoining property owners. I mean, I, I understand the need for it and everything, I just, I I think, I think that if you, if you want, if you want to have more time to tie up loose ends, you could, uh, we could notice, in the meantime, we could also notice the, um, the, the property owners in the neighborhood as to the extent of the, uh, project.
Yeah, understood. We, we are designing it in such a way, for what it's worth, that the, the new structure is effectively independent of those party walls. Um, not that they wouldn't want to know anyhow, but, um, there will be minimal, if no disturbance, to those, to those adjacent walls.
The, um, but as you said, they would want to know anyway.
They would want to, yeah, yeah.
Obviously, especially with, with the new city hall going in there, adjacent.
I mean, the flip side to that would be that they acknowledge it's an, it's an existing structure and then go before the ZBA, is that right, Rick?
Pardon me?
So the flip side to that coin, as opposed to demolition, would be an acknowledgement of the existing structure seeking relief of square footage for the size of their units. Given, I mean, I don't, I don't know the extent of deconstruction, because it sounds like it's more deconstruction than it is demolition.
I'm thinking most of it is gonna come down, they're gonna rebuild the back wall.
Are you, you know, I mean, are you, are those walls tied into the adjacent structures?
Are you lost? No, well, so, sorry. So, actually have some picture records, so the building predates Proctor's, so clearly it's standing on its own, and there are some picture records from nineteen hundred to nineteen twenty, and, well, the building next door is not even touching, right? The, the, the carriage house is touching the, the building next door. Um, but the building next door, uh, was probably built in the nineteen twenties or the nineteen thirties, and I have some cool historical postcards, if you guys want to see them.
So, okay, so loose ends, we have, uh, variance and the issue with notifying for the demo.
And, and just each, each project is obviously a, a unique case, but I do believe there's precedence for establishing a hearing pending ZBA approval, I believe this board has said that before, I just.
Yeah. I thought we could do that.
For what? Didn't we just, last meeting, um,
No.
Schedule a hearing pending CBA approval, or is that, or is that not a thing?
Well, the, the scheduling of a hearing can't happen until the application's been declared complete.
Okay.
You know, whether or not the application's completeness is up to the board in terms of, they feel they have sufficient information.
What's the procedural posture here, that, do we? Can we do anything before we do something with respect to seeker? Other than table it?
Sorry, Peter, I missed you.
What, what's the procedural posture here now? Can we do anything today, or? Will we table? Can we make a secret?
I, it's, it's, it is the board's call, but what I'm hearing is that they're not that the applications, that there's still details that the board would like to know about uh, or nail down before it declares the application complete.
All right, but what about on the seeker side, that's such a shame.
Side, I don't know if you have enough information or not, that's also your call. Uh, it is an unlisted action, uh, I believe, right?
Yep.
But, um, so, uh, you don't have to declare a lead agency, certainly, but, um.
You just confirm that it's an unlisted action.
You can do that, I mean, just confirm it's an unlisted action, but I mean, um, it's, it's, it really is your decision whether or not you feel you have enough information to do, to make a determination as to its environmental significance.
For the record, it has already been declared an unlisted action.
Okay, so we don't even have to do that. How about the, uh, asbestos abatement, anything?
So we've had asbestos tests done that came out negative.
Yeah, so, um, I retained Alpine Services, um, we came through, we tested everything that we could, from walking around the windows, because we're having those restored, to the plaster walls, there was no, uh, tiles or any, anything around the boiler or anything, and so far, everything came back clean. So there's the one thing that's remaining, we're demolishing, uh, inside the carriage house, there's an old walk-in fridge which didn't get tested, but we're gonna test it anyway, I doubt it has it, but, and that's the only thing that's remained untested.
I see, so.
It sounds like.
How, how far along are you with your plan, your financing, all that thing? I mean, if we went two meetings, is that gonna adversely affect your ability to?
Financing is.
With the rest of the board.
Okay.
And then our project will be fully capitalized, and she's going to fully go ahead. So, and the idea really is from day one was, sorry. The idea from day one was just like, everything buttoned up, so we can move as fast as possible, just to do everything right.
Well, uh, I think it's a great project, uh, so that, you know, the two things, again, are still outstanding, are, you know, notifying, you know, the details of the demo to the adjacent properties and, um, the variance for the size. So those are the two things, I don't know if we could move forward with those, there's contingencies or what?
Can I ask procedurally, are we better off going through the ZBA than trying to?
Well, it looks like you're gonna have to go to the ZBA anyway, to get the variance, right?
Do we need the variance if we can prove that it is in fact a, a new construction and therefore?
I think either way, isn't it? If it's under the square footage minimum.
Well, that applies to existing buildings only, uh, therein lies the, um.
Therein lies the conundrum, really, uh, the, uh, the way I believe it is worded. It is, uh, uh, essentially a remodeling prohibition.
Yeah, I, I would offer that, I think the code needs
But I'm not.
more language around where that cutoff is between existing and, and new construction. For this and for other projects, but.
All right, I think we need to, to do something here, so, is there, do you feel you have all the information you need to do anything today, or if not, what's your place to do? We have seeker, and we have.
So, we, we've already determined that seeker is, it's an unlisted action.
Right.
Um, you know, I guess the question would be, you know, can we say the application is complete? Um, if we're still leaving out two issues. Uh, I'm not sure about how we go about that. But, uh,
I mean, you still have to notify the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, no matter what, right?
Right. So.
So, may, I don't know if we can do this as a contingency, you know, uh, it's like, say it's complete. Yeah, well, we don't have a notification, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So it's another meeting.
Table it.
Yeah, I think we're out of tables.
Do you, do, does the applicant know what he needs in order to move forward? Do you have all the information you need? Do you know what the concerns are?
Yeah, I think I got the gist of it. Are we able to get approval in the next meeting, assuming we check all the boxes here?
You still have to have a hearing, right?
Right, you still have to have a hearing, you can do the seeker next meeting, hopefully. The, you could declare the application complete next meeting, depending upon what information you get.
Right.
Um, but you still have to have a public hearing, I believe.
Right. But would, would there be anything to prevent them from starting some of their project under the guise of the engineering department code? I mean, he's gonna start with the water and sewer.
Yeah, and you'll have more information about that next time, too.
In my experience, uh, usually if an applicant wants to abate hot material, I mean, you'd, you would need to talk with the building.
Or stabilize.
Or stabilize.
Yeah.
Abate or stabilize, but not start the deconstruction process or anything that would be.
Can't start building, per the plan, right? Right.
Okay. I, I wonder if we have an exception with the rear wall there on the alley that is, is really needing attention. I know that Amaha is already.
If it's an abatement.
I, I received notice from the building department that there's I received notice from the building department that the back wall, there were some loose bricks, and I informed of that, so.
So, you need to abate that.
As soon as possible, yeah, so that would be ideal.
So there's nothing to prevent them from starting that?
No, they can stabilize.
Right, there you go.
The, uh, I guess the only outstanding issue is the, the four hundred square feet apartments. Uh, I don't have a definitive answer on that yet, but I'll try to figure it out.
Who decides whether it's a remodel or a new building?
I was seeking a letter from the head of the building department standing by what he told me on the phone, that in fact it would and should be considered new construction, given the amount of demolition.
Carlo might consult me about that, I don't know.
Okay, so then if he has a new building, he doesn't have to go with the requirements of square footage, is that what?
He won't need a variance.
For the square.
If, if, well, I, I can't say that for sure, okay? I have a review of the code in detail.
Okay.
Right, it is a little bit
Right.
odd right now, the way it's worded.
So can we just wait until we have more other details?
Yes.
Yes.
And come back next month with everything we need to have buttoned up, so that we can make a decision?
For a hearing.
Okay, at least two more, at least two more meetings, yeah.
And make the motion that we table until we can get more details from, uh, Carlo and
Everybody else.
Everybody else, um.
I second.
You want to? Eric, will you notice the demo? Compose demo?
Yes.
Semi-demo.
Yes, if you're gonna, if you're going to, um, you go about the demolition or deconstruction, to the extent that you're going to do, um, would you say it constitutes more than seventy-five percent of the building?
I would say so.
Okay, yeah, then, uh, what I will do is re-notice.
Okay.
And make sure that that demolition's inclusive of the notice.
Okay.
All right, well, we have a motion, second to table it, is a discussion on the motion? Hold favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, now, there's, uh, two other, uh, items on the bottom of the agenda, the so, uh, PLPC twenty twenty-five zero zero two has, uh, asked for extension uh, which was granted previously at this meeting, and then, uh, PLPC two, twenty twenty-four zero zero nine has, uh, opted to remove herself from the agenda for their own reasons, I guess. So the, that brings us to the last, now the last item on the agenda, and I apologize to you folks, because I thought this was gonna be a quick one, and and yours was gonna be long, but hopefully yours is not as long as, as this is. So the next item on the agenda is PLPB twenty twenty-five zero zero two nine, ten eleven Second Avenue.
Chairman? Yeah, I'd like to submit for the record, uh, a whole bunch of emails I got personally, to my email, I, they may have also gone to the planning department, uh, or the planning board email, I'd like to at least formally submit them.
Okay, thank you. Staff has, uh, received them, and they'll be incorporated in the record of this, uh, application.
Oh, yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Andy Brick, Brick Law Firm, um, I'm here, I represent Starlight Developers, which is the property owner. Um, and I'm being brought in as part of the project team. Uh, I wasn't involved, uh, in the first go-round of this project, because I was representing the planning commission at the time, so I was, uh, conflicted out, uh, but now I'm getting brought back in, and, uh, we're here this evening, we have a full project team. Uh, I'm simply introducing it to point out the fact that we're here for a very simple request this evening, uh, for you to declare lead agency. We, uh, received the staff report, we know that there are a number of items, um, that are still to be provided, so that you can do a due diligence seeker review. Tonight, we're not asking for that review, we're simply asking to, for you to declare yourself as lead agency, and, um, you are the appropriate lead agency, in, in my thirty years of experience, uh, with the seeker statute, uh, the planning board is clearly the appropriate lead agency in this regard. The standards for, uh, picking who the appropriate lead agency is, is who has the ability to do the most thorough and comprehensive analysis of, of the potential impacts of the project, and clearly, uh, you, as, as the planning board with the full site plan review authority over this application, uh, would be the appropriate entity, so that, that's what we're here for, uh, this evening. With me is John Ahern, also part of the project team, Brian Ostehow from EDP, who will uh, update you on some of the elements and where we are in the process, but tonight, it's, it's a simple request, and we, we think, uh, hopefully it can be accomplished, it's just uh, you considering yourself to declare lead agency, which would then, because it's a type-one action, it would be coordinated review, you would notify all the other interested and involved agencies of your intent, and then there will be a thirty-day comment period from those agencies. So thank you for the opportunity, and at this time, I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Andy. Yes, sir.
So we, uh.
Could you identify yourself with the.
Sure, John Ahern from Couch White, uh, so we updated the EAF based on some comments from Eric. And I would just request, I know Eric's gonna send them to, just make the request, um, from the emails that were sent to Mr. Scully.
Yeah, and, and reviewing all of these, it, it appears that they're all addressed to the planning board, I haven't seen one email that I haven't, uh, sent over to you.
Okay.
I think that your, in, your, um, your email address is, uh, inclusive of that group. And so it might be something of a confusion element in, in that regard, but all of these are I'm just circling that they're from the planning, they're addressed to the planning board at Troy NY.gov, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure they're the ones we haven't gotten. Um, so, uh, unless anyone has any additional questions for Brian and I, um, the site plan hasn't changed, same plan you had last month. Um, questions with regard to that? Um, if not, then, as Andy stated, we're just here to ask the board to declare some tents and, uh, submit notices for lead agency.
Okay, well, I guess it, uh, doesn't bring up the determina- determination of lead agency, but before we do anything beyond that, there are a lot of questions that are contained in the staff report, you, you saw those, I assume?
Yes, of course, but in, in order to provide additional seeker information with respect to a seeker determination, we need to submit that to the lead agency, whoever that's gonna be, so.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So.
I wish, can we turn that up? Do we have any control over the volume here, or?
It's been late today, but.
I'll, I'll yell.
Yeah, I don't know that I want to touch that.
Sure.
I don't know about the folks back there, if you can hear, but I can't.
So, with respect to some additional, uh, documentation, I, some of the, some of the items that Eric had on staff report, some of it's site plan information, which of course, we're gonna update that when we submit further site plan information to the board for site plan review. Um, but some of it is also seeker information, right?
Right.
Uh, but we're gonna submit that information to whoever the lead agency is gonna be, so if it's gonna be this board, you know, once you declare lead agency um, and you circulate your notices, we can submit in advance of that, anticipating no one objects to it. Um, but like I said, that information will be submitted to whoever's gonna be leading it, whether it's this board or a different agency.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Where we can make a determination with respect to lead agency?
I'd like to make a motion to declare the, the planning board lead agency in this project.
Thank you, in a second?
A second.
Motion made in second to declare Troy Planning Board Lead Agency on this application, is there any discussion? Hold favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Okay, so, uh, thank you. So, uh, this, public comment is not required at this time, but we, we'll give you an opportunity to comment. Now, I, I just want to say this, you, you heard my comments at the beginning, so you'll have three minutes to comment. If you've already sent it to us in writing, you don't need to tell us again. Um, and if your friend says it, you don't have to get up and reiterate it, because you will have heard it the first time. And, and I also just want to say this, after the last hearing, um, after the last meeting, there was no opportunity for public comment, because there was nothing to be commented on, we were, the only issue before us was whether or not we were gonna take a lead agency status. And when we turned, we didn't have enough information to do that, and it's a technical issue, not something that you folks probably want to comment on, you want to comment on the substance of the whole thing. So there was no sense in having public comment on whether or not we take lead agency status, unless you think somebody else should have lead agency status, I don't know. But, in any event, because this is moving forward now, and I know a lot of you have concerns about this, as you, many of you have expressed in writing, we can give you an opportunity to start the process of commenting today, even though it's not required, so I just wish you'd be respectful of the rules here, and just try to limit your comments to three minutes, and don't reiterate something somebody else has already said. So I just wish you'd be respectful of the rules here and just try to limit your comments to three minutes and don't reiterate something somebody else has already said. After the last meeting, when you weren't given an opportunity to comment because you didn't need an opportunity to comment, I got, and we all got, I think, probably very vitriolic and kind of nasty comments about why you weren't entitled, why you weren't allowed to comment. So I don't think that's helpful. We're trying to, we're trying to gather information to make a proper decision here. And you don't have to accuse us of being political. I don't know if this is a Republican issue or Democrat issue or independent. I don't know who wants this project and who doesn't. Nothing political about it. We're trying to do the best for the city of Troy. So whether it's Republicans or Democrats, we're hopefully both. So anybody who would like to comment, please come forward and identify yourself. Call up to the microphone, please.
Can I identify myself as Monica Woollett?
Hi, Monica.
Hi. I live in Waterford. I reviewed the seeker and I provided many comments and complaints, and my colleagues did as well. I'll get down to the nitty gritty. I believe my comments are part of the public record, so I invite other people to review them. Okay. Now, Waterford residents have a unique position of being affected across the river. This is especially a quality of life issue, and an apartment complex would very much change the character of the neighborhood. Since Waterford is extremely affected by this project, it is included as an involved agency from here forward. The mayor of Waterford sent the Troy Planning Board a letter supporting our concerns. We are not going away. Okay, the seeker answers this. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic across present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities? You've answered no. Answering no, the question is totally disingenuous. The road starts at a curving two lane highway, goes by an elementary school, 307 planned parking lots. Okay, Waterford is the oldest incorporated village in the country, built in 1700s, not intended to have a highway running through it. Currently, the bridges and streets are overloaded with traffic. Okay. And the river is very extremely narrow at this location. We see everything. We hear everything. We are aware of environmental and health impacts and the quality on our lives. We watch the bald eagles. We watch the great herons, the owls, egrets fly. The, between archaeological sites, Peoples Island and Waterford, bald eagles are protected by Migratory Bird Treaty Act and the Bald Gold Eagle Protection Act. Now, the noise, the noise is huge. The document speaks of removing trees and vegetation. This vegetation acts as a buffer to the noise and light and provides habitat to living creature. Water is sound transmitter. It acts as a powerful conduit, amplifying the impact of noise and light generated by human, increased human activity. You know, the noise reaches reaches our site faster and louder than it would be at the site. You can hear everything. And this is certainly unhealthy. This would have political, this would have quality of life implications for Waterford residents as well as aquatic ecosystems. You're projecting 175 units? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Over 100 balconies, open air spaces, rooftop congregation places and walkways open to the public, which all add to the disruption of noise. Add to this 307 vehicles traveling in and out. Excavation during the project using explosives would not only be noisy, but would change the environment and the environment would never recover the light. The tree removal. You can't get the trees back once they're gone. There will be, there is, there's no way to block light in the buildings to be too close to the rock cliff. Remember, it's a rock cliff on the riverbank. Effects of light crossing the river, light pollution, flare. Direct illumination caused discomfort and distraction, tearing into residents' homes. We can have artificial light can impact the light dark cycle, and people could have, be looking through and seeing other people. Now, there's proximity and orientation to the river is a significant concern. You're making me rush. Loss of habitat, vegetation along rivers provides crucial habitat for various species. Clearing it can disrupt local ecosystems and biodiversity. What are
I think, did you already submit this in writing?
I did not. I did not. These are my notes for this meeting.
Okay, yeah.
There's nothing, you know
If you could, if you could start to wind up.
Being respectful. I'm always respectful in these situations.
Good, thank you.
I'm, but I would like to see the respect returned.
Yeah.
And the comments you made before are not acceptable.
Well, could you explain that to me, please? Because I wanted to be respectful.
Republican, Democrat, I don't even know what you're talking about. I wasn't even here at the last meeting and that should never come up.
But if you had listened, I said, after the last meeting, we got nasty comments from, from people. Listen, ma'am, will you take a seat, please? You're finished. Take a seat, please. I'll decide what I keep to myself and what I don't. Take a seat, please. You're done.
Okay, well.
And, and I don't, I wouldn't consider that respectful. Thank you. Take a seat. Take a seat. Who's, anyone else like to speak?
Hello again. How are you, folks?
Welcome back.
Yes, indeed. So I would say that I really only have one purpose for tonight, very narrow point for tonight. And that is to draw your attention to 28511, the professional assistance and assistance in escrow accounts. I'll just read the section A for you because it basically just says that you can retain the services of planning, engineering, legal, environmental and other, and other professional consultants whose expertise is reasonably necessary to assist the body in review of significant applications involving complex issues beyond the usual scope of review. Given the context, given the history of this, of this application, I think this very much meets that definition by, by any, by any, by any measure. So basically, this is just sort of pointing out that you have this tool at your disposal. And please exercise it because these are going to be really complex issues that are going to come before you. I actually agree with the applicants that I do think you guys are the, are the most appropriate for body to be lead agency. But with that comes the responsibility. So I'm just sort of echoing the, the, trying to relay the gravity. And you have this very excellent tool at your disposal, so please make sure that you exercise that, 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 that power. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Next, please. Is there anyone else to comment? Hi. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. All right. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. My name is Jessica Bennett. I live at 1009 Second Avenue, right next to this site. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We do appreciate it. This is a really big project with a lot of history. As you know, this started in May 2020. And a number of us here in the room have been with, been with it for literally every single meeting. Before I kind of start my prepared comments, I do just want to point out if the application is not declared complete, sorry, I'm on tippy toes right now. If it's not declared complete, there are, there are things missing, right? That's, that's the definition. Then the planning board, in submitting that they would like to be lead agency, cannot effectively send out the letters to all of the involved agencies within seeker to let them know to start that 30 day timeline to declare yourselves lead agency. I did notice on the application that the city of Waterford, which should be an involved agency, excuse me, is not listed. So I'm not sure what the mechanism is for kind of reining back your intention to, you know, what the measure that was just passed to be lead agency. But I urge you to kind of step, step back and take a look. The, the application being complete is, I think, a very important part of this process, and I don't want to start seeker off on the wrong foot. In full transparency, I am the co-founder of Friends of the Mahican Tuck, which is a group that formed
I'm sorry, what?
Friends of the Mahican Tuck. Mahican Tuck is the Algonquin name for the Hudson River. It means the river that flows both ways. We formed as a grassroots community group in May of 2020 with the goal of preservation and protection of this important land, as it is the very last bit of undeveloped land on the entire Hudson River in all of Troy. In addition, it is a national register eligible archaeology site that we have artifacts on it that date back to 5,000 BCE. And as I learned in this process, quite literally from this site, rock has its own fingerprint like we all do, and it's quite unique to this site. So in the spirit of getting seeker off on the right foot, I urge you to kind of take a look at the application and make sure it's complete before we start this process. In our submission, we covered where we think the application is complete. So I won't waste your time by going over it, but do know that all of these notes were sent to you. I do want to say, I think that the PDD, the Plan Development District, is the wrong zoning for this and should be should be rejected, and that's by the city's own criteria. It meets very few of the objectives. For instance, the existing character of the neighborhood. This is an R1 single family neighborhood. Too high density apartment complex buildings could not be more out of character than if they were skyscrapers. They, it will be adversely affecting the quality of the neighborhood, and that's not even going into the traffic, the noise, all of the things that will be studied in seeker. One of the, the striking criteria in the PDD that really struck out to me was that there will be no social, economic, or cultural consequences from this project. Now, we know from HUD studies that when there is a significant loss of green space, which 13 acres is significant, there is a decrease in property values. It's between 6 and 9%, and I'd be happy to get those studies for you. And that's something that this, this community, because it is a working class, low income community, really is affected by. But I want to kind of speak mostly to the cultural consequences, and I'm going as fast as I can.
Yeah.
Um, this is a national register eligible site, but beyond that, this site has never been developed. There are no ruins of foundations. This is part of the original Stone Arabia Patent, which if you went to school in, you know, the area, you probably learned about. This was part of Jacob Abraham Lansing, father of Lansingburg, his original land. In fact, his farmhouse is just north of the site. It's still standing in Pleasantale. He operated Lansing's Ferry, which was a ferry that went across in 1700s to the early 1800s, right from this very site. You know, not, I'm not speaking hyperbole. This is where we know it was. And it has even Revolutionary War history. This was where General Knox crossed the Hudson on Christmas Day in 1775. After that, it was known in the 1800s to the early 1900s as Lansing's Grove. And in doing research at the wonderful Historical Society, I've found that this has been used by the community for over 100 years. There are all these listings of this group and that group having picnics, having campings. This is a real valuable piece of land to this community. And in organizing around this issue over the last five years, I can say without hyperbole, I have knocked on every single door in the neighborhood. I have spoken to every single person. And many of them have stories about this land, how they used to hang out there when they were a kid. They still go fishing there. They feel safe because their kids can go bike there and they don't have to worry about them. Even though it is technically privately held, it is still a vital piece of nature to this commu- community. And that flies in the face of the criteria of will there be social, economic, and cultural consequences? The PDD is very clear on that. There shall be no, not, we're going to try to have it be different. So we've got a couple of moving parts here, the incomplete application, seeker, but the zoning is really what ties this all together. If the developer doesn't get the zoning, the seeker is kind of a moot point. So.
All right, but thank you, thank you. I think your time is probably up there, but so I think, you know, we'll leave this up to the Corporation Council. But I think in order to get this started, somebody has to pick their intent to take lead agency status, which we've done, and then the other involved agencies will be notified of that and have an opportunity to agree or disagree with that. So this is the first thing to be done to get this moving. And also, I'm not certain that Waterford would be an involved agency. They might be an interested agency, but I'm not sure about involved. But that's again, something for Corporation Council to sort out. But your comments are very interesting, well presented and respectfully presented, and thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
See if I can get this to operate properly.
Yeah, maybe you want to take it right out of there.
It's probably does it.
Just break it.
Hold on to it. Yeah, okay. Sorry.
No worries. So good evening and thank you all for your work on the board. I really appreciate you taking the time to serve your community this way. I think that's a vital function of government. Regarding the seeker for this project, I know we're not at that point yet.
What's your name, please?
Sorry, Alec Lindman. I would like to encourage you to anticipate finding that this needs a positive declaration. It is very clearly a significant impact to a completely undisturbed and historically significant site that has never been developed. We've heard about the Native American artifacts on the site. I'd also like to point out that the federally recognized tribe that is associated with this land has not given its approval. And in fact, the applicant misled the city about whether they had contacted the tribe and received their approval. And we'll see that that's a theme. Others have talked about the eagles, ospreys, foxes, wildlife, et cetera, on the land. Obviously, that's a significant thing for the community. The trees in the forest are, as shown by previous surveys
Can't be seen.
Exceptional as far as the county is concerned. Using USDA data, these are some of the largest trees documented in the county. This Plan Development District is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. If someone had wanted a development to be there, comprehensive plan process was their opportunity to suggest that a development should be there. There is no mention of that. This is shown as remaining in our one area and the hub of development further to the south. And as was previously mentioned, this is inconsistent with the rules for a plan development district. So regarding the seeker application, it contains blank fields, incorrect information, and misleading information. And I submit that the package that was given to you with these extremely dense engineering drawings is what you might call technical bombing. It's overwhelming you with detailed information that obscures the fundamental nature of the proposal, which as the applicant has said, is unchanged from previous meeting and essentially unchanged from previous rounds of review, going back to earlier in the project. So regarding that, both the zoning and the seeker that were previously approved were thrown out in court. And given that the application is essentially unchanged, you should expect the same outcome this time, unless significant changes are made. So finally, I wanted to point out that the character of the applicant is somewhat in question on the basis of facts. So for example, during the last meeting, he was overheard.
I'm not sure if you want to go here, but
I'm, I have some quotations from witnesses. I'm just going to read those without comment. So Kevin Vanenberg said, can I ask them to shut?
Are you reading things that you witnessed?
I and others witnessed, yes.
Okay, I'll let this here say. So here say.
I don't, you know
Yeah, I don't
I don't think we need to go here.
This is the I would reject any, I mean, the ad hominem is of no use to this board at this time.
I mean, if there's, if there's something specific to this application, you can tell us about it, but if you're just talking about somebody's character, we don't need that.
Right. So the, the comments, I'll just summarize rather than essentially it was a, a desire to shut down public comment on the project.
And that'll be for the board to decide, okay? Really?
That's understandable. Probably the desire of most applicants, but go ahead.
That may be.
And I don't think that's a character flaw. I think it's a practical thing.
So I'll just conclude by saying that I think the, the comment earlier on the record this evening about who wants and who doesn't is it's a reasonable question to ask. It is indeed one of the objectives of the planning board to ask such a question. And I think that the magnitude and consistency And I think that the magnitude and consistency of the public comments that have been submitted, not only in this particular round, but going back over the entire history of the project. I don't know of any other project with such consistent comments. And so confusion about who wants the project and who doesn't, I think, is unfounded in this case. I think it's very clear that the community, whether that's in Troy or Waterford, who I believe should also be definitely included in the process, is strongly against the project. And I would very much encourage the board to, to reflect that in its decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I would think you're correct that the people we've heard from are against it mostly. But the, this comment about who was for it, who wasn't, was responding to one of the people interested in opposing this, saying that the board was acting on behalf of some political party. I don't know which party that was.
No, I, I agree with you on that, that this is not a political question. This is purely a, a practical, logical, ethical, environmental, economic question. And I think on all of those grounds, as for example, laid out in the Plan Development District criteria, this project does not satisfy those criteria and should not proceed.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Good evening, my name is Keith Yaracawa. Very brief comments. At first, I really do appreciate you allowing the public to participate in this hearing. You hear me now? We appreciate you allowing us to voice our comments on this. It seems like a very minor decision lead agency status. But I, you made a comment, I just want to point it out of how I was thinking about it. When you said that you didn't think the public would want to comment on technical issues, they had other things in mind. You know, technical is how land use law goes, right? I mean, these are the technical criteria, the technical specifications. This is sort of the meat of how we make decisions in this area. So, and, and I'm pretty sure that a lot of these folks, if you're making any decision, they have a comment about it. So I wasn't here last time, I didn't witness all that. But I just wanted to sort of make sure I put that on the record. It made me feel uncomfortable, like you were making decisions for the public. I know that's not what you're doing. I just don't want the appearance of that to get in the way of public participation in some session. So thank you very much for having us.
I guess the, the point was that somebody has to be lead agents, lead agency. So if members of public think somebody else should be, they, they can tell us about that now. Maybe we could change our mind. I don't know who, who would be better at it than us.
Right, yeah, no, and I mean, that's exactly, that's the perfect question, the question you're answering tonight. And, and you know, I wasn't really sure before I got here. I think, like I said, it's just sort of a feeling, what you said, or how it made me feel out of context, I'm sure. But, you know, to the extent that there's sort of prejudgment on what the public wants or what they want to comment about, that gets problematic for me.
Fair point.
I think the, the only thing about lead agency that I would point out is it at least according to the secret handbook, the application comes in the EAF. It's distributed to all the involved agencies. So they have an opportunity to decide if they want to become lead agency. And we, when, you know, when we got here, we had no idea if it had been distributed yet. So that would be my only question is whether the full distribution is going out so that every, every other involved agency has had an opportunity to think about whether they want to be lead agency in this process, which probably would precede a declaration to the agency status.
Be the next step, I believe.
Okay.
I think we distribute after, we distribute after we declare lead agency to give them a chance to object or to.
Yeah, yeah.
It has to start someplace. So somebody has, and we start it, and then others can object, other agencies could object, and then that would have to be assessed.
Yeah, yeah. And then all I'm pointing out is that the handbook, the secret handbook, which isn't law, it's not regulations, guidance. But it sort of says to do it a different way, right? It says, receive the application, it's distributed to involved agencies within 30 days. And it says, the 30 days after the involved agencies have received the EAF, then we can start talking about, or you make your declaration, whatever it is, of lead agency status. So I know, it sounds like that hasn't been done yet. But you have already made a motion and approved lead agency status.
Yes, and then it goes out to the other agencies and they, they pretty much approve or disapprove or have a different idea who should be lead agency. They have 30 days, they have 30 days to approve, to review that and get back to us and let us know. And then at that point in time, we can start talking about a declaration.
Got it. I mean, it, it's a little different in the regulations, is all I'm saying. The, the reason for the distribution to go out first is so that there's not some appearance, right, in advance of them having an opportunity to consider it, of who should have lead agency status, so that we don't have to change it throughout the course of the event.
So the application's made to us, so we have to do something.
So you distribute.
Say, we're not going to take it or we are going to take it. And then if we say we're going to take it, then other involved agencies have an opportunity to challenge that, basically.
But that's how it works. Somebody's got to start the clock.
Yeah, and the, well, the, yeah, that's right. And the clock, according to the handbook, starts when it's distributed, not when you declare lead agency.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at that, but that's, hasn't been the practice or the policy as far as I know for many, many years. So we'll take a look at that.
We won't be declared lead agency if we are until 30 days after 30 days, right?
So we declare our intent to be.
You declare an intent, you wouldn't be confirmed depending upon whether or not you receive objections or other proposals.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Guidance is always appreciated. And we're going to turn it over to the Corporation Council.
Thanks a lot.
Is there anybody else who wants to comment?
Hello, my name is.
You can pull that down closer to.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is that better? My name is Rachel Carter. I live at 1011 Second Ave. I've been a neighbor to the parcel for over five years. And I'm going to be brief. I know we've been here for a while and I don't want to, as you mentioned before, hit too many of the same concerns over and over. But I have some issues with the application that's been put forward and also with the proposed potential zoning change. So as others have said regarding the application, it's very incomplete. And some examples that I found on a quick search were that it omits the presence of endangered and rare species that are native to New York State, which are listed publicly on the DEC's website for anyone to find on a map in that parcel, both plants and animals. The application also states that there will be no increase in traffic in the area despite adding over 170 units. That just logically doesn't make sense. Something else is that it states there will be no excavation on the application, even though subsurface parking is part of the design. So I'm not sure how that makes sense. And if you have observed the terrain, it will need significant grading, which will require excavation. Several questions on the EAF form are blank. So I think it's reasonable to ask that the board obtain a full and truthful application before any decision is made on the project. My other issues with the zoning have been mentioned already, so I won't go into them in detail. But it would negatively affect the character of the neighborhood. It's going to have a significant effect on the visual perspective relative to the surrounding buildings in the vicinity. It has significant environmental and natural consequences. And it also has social, economic, and historical consequences relative to the history of the land, both for the city of Troy and for the Stockbridge Muncie community. So thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Just to, to comment on your comments, you mentioned in the incompleteness of the application and also some missing information on the seeker form. We are aware of that, staff's very well aware of it. And I don't know if you had access to the staff report, but has identified many of those things that you were alluding to. And there are others, I think, that will be identified for the applicant as we go along. But we're well aware that there are a lot of answers, questions still to be answered. And we haven't even come close to declaring the application complete.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No one else? Okay, the applicants representatives want to address any of those comments?
Just very briefly to follow up on Professor Yaracawa's comments about seeker. Yes, it's, you are declaring tonight, you declared your intent to be lead agency. And then you will be disseminating that interest and intent to all of the interested and involved agencies. And the 30 day clock does begin to run when those items are distributed rather than tonight. But in my experience, Eric and staff has been pretty diligent in, in getting those out to all the interested involved agencies. But Professor Yaracawa was correct that it's, that 30 day clock starts to run when those letters go out, not tonight. So I just wanted to say, we agree with it. And we also welcome the public comment and the ability to hear from the public and be able to respond to whatever questions or concerns they raise. So we look forward to engaging in this process with you. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything, anyone else from the applicant side? No, okay. Therefore.
I just want to say. I just want to say one thing. The, the reason why I interrupted the prior speaker who wanted to comment on the character of the applicant, or at least that's what he said, is that one, this is a very contentious project, as the board recognizes. And I do not want it to devolve into any sort of character assassination or have one side speaking about the other party's character, because it can just, you know, it will not be productive, it will not be relevant ultimately, and it will not help the board make a, a sound and reasonable decision. So I'm not against freedom of speech in any respect, but I think we have a right to insist that all speech here be courteous and not, and be, and be relevant to the issues that the board confronts.
Thank you, Mr. Marson. Okay, so do we have to do anything? We're finishing with this application.
Yeah, no, you don't have to do anything. Do you have anything else you want to say to the applicant or anything of that nature?
Actually, this was raised by one of the, one of the public commenters here. Mr. City Engineer, what do you think about obtaining third-party advice for the council?
Yeah, for, for this project, we'll definitely be reaching out to the applicant for them to fund through escrow, the use of consultants. We'll confer internally to see what type of consultants and whom we contract with.
Yeah, so is the, there's provision for broad range of consultants, including legal, engineering, I think others too.
Correct.
So, but we don't have to make that decision now, but it's probably.
No, it's, it's pretty typical for projects of this scale. We have multiple projects currently in escrow with consultants, and this one certainly would not be an exception. Yes, yes, well, my, my office will reach out to them. No, I think it's, I think it's good we discussed it, but um, we'll reach out to the applicant. That's, that's right in the code, we have the, we have the right to do it, so.
I do, and, and I don't know that the, the speaker didn't identify any particular areas of where they thought that more expertise was required. But I mean, you know, the board can consider certainly something with respect to the historic and the, the artifacts and things like that might be an issue or, or the I mean, the, the court was particularly concerned with the Native American history and the relationship with the Stockbridge Muncie. So I mean, there, there are all sorts of aspects that I think the board might require further expertise.
But we can do that down the road.
Yes.
Is there anything else in the planning board?
I guess the question would be, how do we determine all the agencies that we need to notify?
Statutory.
They are listed in the long form.
The applicant's form.
Yes, yeah, so we can, we can start with that. And if you guys have any inquiries into additional involved agencies, just send me an email and I can inquire with the applicant.
Okay, we, you've listed, well, they've listed DEC, Officer Park and Rec. When you go through the Officer Park and Rec, does that necessarily have to also include SHPO? Or is that automatically SHPO is?
Yeah, SHPO is part of Officer Parks and Rec.
Okay, so that would tie in, both of them.
Yes, essentially, one and the same.
Okay, yeah. And would we, what about the Stockbridge Muncie community? Where would that fit in if we want?
So, Rick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but an involved agency is an agency that directly undertakes an approval or funding process, I believe, in this project. I, I don't know if I want to go on record, but seeker define, has a definition for what an involved agency.
I think that is the definition.
Okay, so if we have, Eric, how does that play out correctly determining?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
How are you going to correctly determine who is an involved agency and should be notified?
Well, my first source is going to be like page two of the long form. And unless you guys identify additional agencies that may be involved, you know, I would, I would welcome, you know, I'd welcome any, any questions that you might have that I can put to the applicant. I have to, I have to kind of, you know, once we, once we send out notifications, we'll send out that part one with the, with the notification. If any involved agency sees reason to include another agency, then they may say so.
Yeah, and I guess I, I would advise reading the actual language of the seeker, you know, 617 NY, whatever the code is on, on the DEC's website of what an involved agency is. And then reaching out to Rick with, with any questions or, or me, that's fine, and.
Who would be responsible for getting the EIS performed?
Now, if, if there were a positive declaration, an environmental impact statement, I mean, there would be a whole process of scoping and things like that. But the environmental impact statement would be drafted by the applicant. The I don't know, I, I, in answer to your question, I will look into whether or not the, the court decision that decided this case, the appellate decision, put great stock in having the Stockbridge Muncie officially, officially recognized tribe involved in the mitigation process. And so I'm not sure that, I'll just look into it further, okay?
Because wouldn't that kind of fall through the Officer Park and Recreation and Historic Preservation? If we wanted that comment, would they ask them for that comment?
As part of seeker, you should never directly rely on the approval of another agency. You must consider what is a hard and thorough look into each environmental concern. No, that's a very broad statement, but you don't want to just say, you know, these next people are, are taking care of it, is my understanding.
So after 30, after all these letters go out and we get approved to be the lead agency, okay? By then, would the applicant have his application completed with all the problems that we have listed here about the garbage and the snow removal and blah, 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 blah? I also had a concern about, they said there was going to be no excavation. I think there's going to be excavation, there's got to be excavation. And what happens to what they take out? Is that going to be left on the site or is that going to be hauled away? These are some of my concerns.
Some of the reports we're going to have to review, I guess it goes back to the question, you know, in the lawsuit that, on the prior application, I understand this is a new application. You know, the Stockbridge Muncie community was acknowledged in that suit, yet. You know, the Stockbridge Muncie community was acknowledged in that suit, yet the Office of Recreation and Historic Preservation was not the, the form. It is on the form. Oh, yeah. Oh, there's, okay. All right. So anyway, the, if, we, we would have to wait for them to come back to whether we determine whether there needs to be any further action with regards to the environmental impact statement, correction?
Speaking of the microphone, please.
Sorry, sorry. So with regard to an environmental impact statement, do we wait for everything to come back from these agencies?
So you will just decide whether this project merits a negative declaration or a positive declaration after you have decided that, that you have sufficient information to make a competent environmental determination.
Right. So we need to include as many agencies as, as would be applicable.
So, so right now, we're in the process, we will be in the process of notifying involved and interested agencies with respect to your intent to act as lead agency. But once that process is complete, which will be 30 days essentially from the mailing to the agency, to the involved agencies. And if they consent or don't object to your acting as lead agency, then the process of your environmental review will more or less begin, okay, in earnest. And that, at that point, you can request whatever information you feel is relevant and important to your determination from the applicant or from any of his experts or any experts that you decide to retain yourselves.
Thank you.
Does that make it clear? It's a pro, it really is a process.
Right.
Okay?
And I assume they also could directly coordinate with the other involved agencies as, as well.
To.
Communicate with them.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we expect communications from the involved agencies.
All of this before it goes to the city council for any kind of PDP hearing, PDD hearing?
Most likely, yes. I mean, you'll, you'll probably make, you, you will have to make a secret determination before any action can be taken on the project. So the secret determination is upfront and foremost.
So I also have a question. Probably, is it one acre that is in the town of Skatticook?
I, I think it's either one acre or three quarters of an acre or so.
So does, do they get involved in any way, shape, and form?
Last time, there was a notification to them last time, and they basically acknowledged that they would abide by the lead agency of, which in that case was the city council.
Okay, anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second.
Oh, a discussion, a home favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.